Welcome. Today is Tuesday, January the fourteenth, 2025, and the board meeting is now called to audit. I like that. All of our board members are currently here except for Karina Guzman-Artis, and we're expecting her at any time. Thank you. At this time, we will have the land acknowledgement by Lisa Harnish.
All right, good evening. We are gathered today on the land of the Kalapulia, who are represented by the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde and the Confederated Tribes of the Soletz Indians. The relationship between the Kalapulia people and this land continues unbroken to this day, and we offer gratitude for the land and for the generations present and past who have stewarded the land since time immemorial. We respectfully acknowledge and honor past, present, and future Native American and Indigenous students and staff of Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We invite you to join us in honoring these ancestral grounds and celebrating the resilience and strength of all Native American and Indigenous people.
Will you please join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Superintendent Castaneda, are there any modifications to the agenda?
No, there are none.
I will turn this portion of the agenda over to you.
Thank you. Well, it's wonderful to have such a full audience today, both to celebrate and participate in our various spotlights. So just a little bit of process. What will happen is we'll do the spotlight. We'll call each group up individually, and then we'll ask you to sit down. And then at the very end, we're going to convene back over here for photos. So with that, I will jump in, and we will start with our community spotlight. Yuri, where are you?
She's here.
Ah, there you are. Yuri Coronado will be presenting our first community spotlight.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening Chair Richardson, Board Directors, and Superintendent Castaneda and Student Advisors. Tonight, we recognize a growing organization for their unwavering support of youth in our community. The Titan House exemplifies the dedication required to nurture and empower the next generation whom we proudly serve in our public schools. During the holiday season, the Titan House has collaborated with Community Service Integration Team Partners and the Edgewater Partners to spearhead initiatives that combat food insecurity and provide essential resources for our youth. They have established a community youth food pantry and a seasonal closet in West Salem, offering food and seasonal clothing to those in need. Excuse me, in need. Beyond these efforts, the Titan House operates the Uplift 503 Mobile Teen Support Van, providing safe spaces for youth to recharge, refuel, and connect. This initiative includes transportation services, access to mentorship, and real-time support to help young people thrive. The organization also champions youth sports by removing financial and logistical barriers and ensuring all youth have the chance to participate in local sports. Through their dedication to creating inclusive hubs for engagement and their focus on addressing immediate and long-term needs, the Titan House continues to make an impactful difference in our community. Their mission to foster resilience and growth among the youth actively builds a strong community meant to thrive each and every day. Thank you, Matt and the Titan House team, for your inspiring work to uplift our youth and create opportunities to help them succeed.
You guys predicted my very request, which was to stand up so that we could see and recognize you. So we will go through our additional spotlights, and then at the end, we will all meet up over here for photos. Wonderful. So I will now turn it over to our Director of Music, Stephen Lidle, who will offer our staff spotlight.
Good evening Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Superintendent Castaneda, and Student Advisors. It is a pleasure to be here tonight to highlight an inspiring tradition that has brought music, inclusion, and community to the heart of Salem during the holiday season, Holidays at the Mall. This wonderful event is the vision of my program associate, Kat Kim, whose determination and creativity have created a new stage for our students to shine. When construction closed at Oregon State Capitol, where students have performed each December, Kat was determined to ensure this cherished opportunity continued. She turned to the Salem Center Mall, and three years later, Holidays at the Mall has become a beloved tradition. The excitement for this event is clear. Teachers began to reach out to Kat as early as in August to reserve their spots. These performances have become a highlight for students, teachers, and community alike. Mall walkers pause for their routines to listen, and people like Fred, a North Salem graduate who's been there multiple years now watching the performances, take the bus daily just to enjoy the music. Even the mall Santa joins the celebration, arriving early to catch the performances. What makes the Holidays at the Mall truly special is its focus on inclusion and diversity. Students perform songs that reflect a variety of cultures and languages, celebrating traditions such as Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, and more. Teachers encourage students to share their own traditions, creating an atmosphere where everyone feels seen and celebrated. Kat's own upbringing, celebrating both Jewish and Christian holidays, has inspired her to foster this sense of belonging and community for others. For Kat, Holidays at the Mall is more about music. It's about connection, empathy, and the joy that comes from bringing people together. Please join me in recognizing and thanking Kat Kim for her incredible work in creating and growing Holidays at the Mall. Her vision has given our students a platform to share their talents and traditions while bringing joy to countless members of our community. Thank you, Kat, for inspiring connection and celebration to music.
I will briefly just say I had my first opportunity to experience the real pleasure of the mall tradition. And my favorite part of it was that there were carolers all over the mall. The moment you walked through the door, you were hearing music, and it continued until you walked out the door at the end of your time. So it really was truly magical. Okay, so this evening, we actually have two spotlights, and I am going to start with our first student spotlight. And I will turn it over to Cory Francis, who is the West Salem Associate Director of Band. Welcome.
Good evening Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Superintendent Castaneda, and Student Advisors. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing two outstanding students from West Salem High School, Jeremiah Acosta and Lauren Huber. These remarkable individuals have achieved a tremendous milestone by auditioning for and being selected to perform in with the Macy's Great American Honor Marching Band at the 2024 Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade in New York City. Jeremiah Acosta was on the snare drum line, and Lauren Huber was in the piccolo section. This prestigious opportunity is a testament to Lauren and Jeremiah's dedication, talent, and passion for music. Their selection for this national honor not only highlights their personal excellence, but also brings well-deserved recognition to West Salem High School's music program and Salem Kaiser Public Schools as a whole. Their success shines as a spotlight on the incredible work being done in our schools and reflects the spirit of excellence we strive for every day. The Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade is internationally recognized as the official start of the holiday season and world famous as a uniquely American entertainment extravaganza. As members of the Macy's Great American Honor Marching Band, Lauren and Jeremiah took an honored position alongside the parade's iconic helium balloons, impressive floats, and top-tier entertainment. They marched through the streets of New York City, cheered on by 3.5 million spectators lining the parade route, and performed live in front of an audience of more than 50 million viewers on NBC. We are so proud of their accomplishments and grateful for the positive impact they have had on our schools and community. Thank you, Lauren and Jeremiah, for representing West Salem High School and SKPS on a national stage. We can't wait to see where you go next. Please join me in congratulating Lauren and Jeremiah for this incredible achievement.
Well, we typically have almost 50 million viewers watching this live at any given moment, so this is just another in a string of accomplishments. Okay, so we will now move on to our second student spotlight, and I have a list of names to read. So what I'm going to do is read these names and then welcome our students up. We have students who will be here tonight honoring the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. with a reading. Okay, so we have Jas Freeman and Jade Freeman from Air. We have Divine Harris from Lamb. Jade Jenkins and Dream Jenkins from Lee. Killian Weaver and Nea Quick from Hayesville Elementary. Alora Dosanata from Judson. Eli Nevs from Leslie. Trinity Weaver from Stevens. Cozy Lawful from McKay. Anaya Frazier from North Salem. Kiara Bailey from Roberts. And Henry Frazier from South Salem High School. And so I will now welcome our students up for the reading.
On the count of three, I want the students to say Happy Birthday, Martin Luther King. One, two, three.
Happy Birthday, Martin Luther King!
And then I want you to come toward the left to this board, and we're going to get a group picture. Thank you. Do you think I'm that short?
You're everywhere.
All right. It is now time for the public comment session of the school board meeting. Please note that we selected speakers at random. Oh, I forgot. I left the superintendent out. Y'all forgive me. It's the superintendent's report at this time. I was moving us on.
Thank you, Chair. I am really pleased to be able to offer a superintendent's report after such a great spotlight experience. I am, this morning, I was at Salem Heights, where in one classroom I learned that today is the 71st day of school. And it is also about the halfway point for this school year. And we have an entire district team that's been working so hard this year to just get as much in place and create the conditions for teaching and learning and excellence all around. And in honor of their incredibly hard work, I am going to offer just a sentence or two about about a dozen or so different major bodies of work that are underway. So this is going to be a very fast, but hopefully punchy mid-year report. If you can advance the slide. So first, you'll see this is kind of in the emerging category. This is because this is work that will take years to do, but we have been doing a lot of work this year. First, the curriculum adoption. We've talked about it in boardrooms many times. In about five years, we will be in the state in which all of our core content curriculum is excellent and up to date. But it is a journey, and we are in our second year of that journey. And it is requiring an incredible amount of time and effort on the part of our teaching staff and our curriculum team, our level directors. It is amongst the most important work happening in the district. We also have done a lot of work led by Olga Cobb, our Deputy Superintendent, and Scott Drew on special education and specifically getting to the point where we're more clear about what all of our services look like and how students access them. And starting in the late winter, we'll have a committee of educators coming together to do the really important work of looking at this continuum and using their professional judgment to help us define and improve it. Behavior supports, student behaviors, have been a topic of conversation, at times intense topic of conversation. And a lot has happened this year on that. We did open Meadowlark, the Children's Day Education Center, a really rare and important public-private partnership. We also have expanded services for students with more acute needs and started a rapid response team so that when there is a situation in a school and a student and a staff need specialized help, we bring that help to them as quickly as possible. Going along with that, we've also done a lot of work on staff safety and student-caused injuries. There are many people to recognize for this, but certainly Chris Moore, Chris Baldridge, and a diverse team that's been tackling this issue. This year, we've trained almost 600 staff in an expanded training program, which is doing a lot to help keep our students and our staff safe. We have much improved responses after an incident and in the face of a possible injury to make sure that staff understand that we're there to support, to understand, and to help correct the conditions that caused that. And we also have done a significant amount of work in just ensuring that we have the data we need to understand the patterns. Positive messaging about Salem Kaiser. You know, we are the second-largest district, and we have been doing a lot of work led by Erin Harada and the communications team to just make sure that the excellence that is in our district is getting part of the media coverage. It is easy to get coverage when something hard happens, but it is a lot of work and takes a lot of skill to get coverage for the day-to-day excellence that happens in our district. We have been doing staff profiles. We've been doing weekly pitches of good news stories and just generally working to raise the profile and make sure that our community knows how great our system is. We're expanding formal and informal staff recognition because the day-to-day work in schools is incredibly important. It is joyful, and it is also difficult. It is all of those things. Our staff need to know how much we value and care for them, and we've been working to expand all of the bigger and small ways to recognize those efforts. And then in the final, in the emerging category, preparing for a master facilities audit. This is something that happens about every decade, and this is our year. We'll learn a lot about our facility's conditions. We will also learn more about what it will take to make sure that our buildings are at the level that our students, our staff, and our communities deserve. Am I speaking too fast? Maybe a little bit? Okay. Okay, sorry. So moving on to our on-track two-sentence updates. These are things that we launched either this year or in a previous year and are now getting to the point of early maturity. Benchmark assessments. So one of the things that has been missing in our district for years and is now growing into place is a really clear way of understanding how our students are doing and how they're progressing. All elementary schools and select middle schools have the same benchmark assessment in place, and most staff have been trained in the early use of that assessment. Over the course of last year, we collected a lot of feedback, and this year, we will start sharing some early drafts of a two-year plan for Salem Kaiser. This is an important document for us because we need a two-year roadmap that is aligned to board goals, clearly tells us what we are trying to accomplish, how we are going to accomplish it, and fits within our resources. Over February and March, you guys will be seeing and discussing versions of that plan. We launched a district-wide attendance campaign this year, which has included toolkits for every school. It also has included increased and revised parent communication to make sure they understand the importance of daily attendance and each student's attendance pattern. And we've started engaging our community partners, some of whom are actually in the audience right now, around the importance of coming to school every day. We have implemented the Early Literacy Grant. That's included hiring foundational skills specialists in every elementary school and training those foundational skills specialists in the scientific basis of reading and reading instruction. And we are investing substantially in early literacy materials for all of our elementary schools focused on phonetics and decoding. We continued the thoughtful, but still bold expansion of our dual-language programs this year. We have pushed into eight additional sites this year and are now serving almost 6,500 students in dual-language programs. This makes Salem Kaiser proportionately the largest dual-language program of any urban district in America. We have been partnering and expanding a long- We have been partnering and expanding a longstanding partnership with Western Oregon. We have a number of training and pipeline programs. So we have an aspiring administrators program, there's about 25 in it now, and another 25 in for next year. We have a bilingual pathway program. And this year, we launched a really important addition, which is a special education Grow Your Own Clinical Partnership. This is allowing us to cultivate our own in-district special education teachers, teachers that know our district and our students and are committed to doing the incredibly important work of special education instruction right here at home. The board knows that we started board monitoring of the results policy. We're about halfway through that, and we'll in fact be doing some of that tonight. And then we have been continuing to closely monitor and manage the district's fiscal health. Tonight, in tonight's board packet, you'll see our ACFR. And accompanied it with is our annual audit letter where we have unmodified findings. And I must pause to recognize the financial services team. These are the huge, huge accomplishments that often sit behind the scenes. But an unmodified audit on a billion-dollar organization and their ability to deliver that every year is an important part of strong organizational leadership. Okay. And then one final slide. Nearing completion, but not all entirely there. This month, we'll be rolling out the weapon detection systems and additional layered safety systems in our high schools. And that is going to be an important step in improving the overall conditions in our schools. The board has already developed and adopted a legislative agenda. We've been meeting with legislators and advocates, and will continue to do so throughout this session to advocate for the funding our schools need and deserve. And we have completed significant stakeholder engagement over the fall in preparation for the submission of our integrated plan, but also for our two-year plan. That reached, I believe, was nearly 1,000 additional people in the fall engagement. So that was about 10 minutes that covers thousands of hours of work on the part of the team. And there's just a lot of important things to celebrate in the hard work and the progress of the Salem Kaiser staff. My final comment today is that January is Board Appreciation Month, and we shall be celebrating you all in various forms throughout the month. And tonight, we'll just start by recognizing that it is an incredible act of commitment and service to be on a board. And I know this in many ways, but it's the amount of time I spend with each of you, partially. You are an incredible part of our team and the success that's here and growing for Salem Kaiser. So expect a variety of surprise gifts and other bits of fun over the course of January. Okay, with that, I believe I will turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Superintendent. Great report. Can we give our Salem Kaiser staff a round of applause? That was awesome. Awesome, awesome. It is now time for the public comment. Okay. Portion of the school board meeting. Please note that we selected speakers at random. We provided an opportunity for public comment by call-in, Zoom, in-person, and in writing. Each participant has three minutes. Electronic mechanisms are used for translation. We have a countdown timer on screen for monitoring our time. The timer counts down from three minutes. At 30 seconds, it turns from green to yellow. And at one second, it turns red and plays a short bell to signal time is up. Please be mindful of your pace for our interpreters. If the board receives written comment ahead of the meeting, the written comment will be posted on the district website. Many individuals signed up to comment, but given the three-minute limit, we will not be able to hear from everyone who signed up. We encourage you to send your comments in writing if you were not selected to speak publicly. Tonight, 10 people signed up and have been selected to comment. Our first public comment will come from Nicole.
Hi, everyone. Hi, my name is Nicole, and I'm in sixth grade. I support resolution 2024.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Can you pull the mic just a little bit closer?
Like that?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Nicole, and I'm in sixth grade. I support resolution 2024 and urge the board to vote yes on it. However, I think there's needs to change, to be changes. This undocumented students and families are actually protected by the resolution. My school and my school were not taught about our rights as students or immigrants. I think that we should all be taught about what to do if ICE shows up in our homes, schools, or in other places. This way, we can support our families and home and communities. We should all know what we don't, that we don't have to open the door to ICE or that we don't have to speak to them. But most students don't know that it leaves a vulnerable position to be a victim or harmful immigration legislation. We are not asking you all to solve a national problem of anti-immigrant language or policies. We are asking for you to make sure that we, as a community, are prepared to live with the consequences of these things. All teachers, counselors, staff, and volunteers in Salem Kaiser schools should be required to the regular up-to-date training about what to do if ICE shows up. I think there should be posters in every one of our classrooms about what to do if ICE shows up. We should have free community sessions for parents to learn about their rights and their students' rights when it comes to ICE. The preparations measures should be as common as a fire drill or lockdown drill, especially when most people in our own community are either undocumented themselves or have immediate family members that are undocumented. How can you really support undocumented students and families if all you have given us are the existing Oregon law and kind words? I urge the board to pass resolution 2024 through 2025 and add additional language to put resources behind your words.
Next, we have Chris MJ.
Hi, good afternoon. Hola, soy un estudiante de Stiles Middle School. Ah lo que les quiero hablar son sobre los yander pouches y la conexión a la migra.
Want to talk about connection to migration? I apologize from the booth. I can hear the echo in the room.
Como ellos van a poder comunicarse con sus padres? Los yander pouches contribuyen a la falta de comunicación, especialmente si los padres tienen corte o algo urgente. Te puedes sentir nervioso, preocupado, de que no puedes ayudar a tus papás. No tiene sentido de que el distrito ponga yander pouches en todas las escuelas porque muchos de los niños quieren estar en contacto con su familia. El distrito debe de tener confianza en los niños. Y se puede ganar la confianza de los niños por hablar con ellos directamente y también que apoyen a los niños, como darles fondos para apoyar inmediatamente si viene la migra a su casa o a la escuela. Si los teléfonos están en los yander pouches, no podemos grabar los problemas de la escuela. Como si la migra llegue a las escuelas, ustedes deben invertir el dinero de los yander pouches, apoyar a los estudiantes, la comunidad, para el apoyo inmediato y también reinvestir estos fondos para entrenar a todos en el distrito, en cómo responder si entra la migra en la escuela. Y para agregar abogados.
In schools. We apologize from the booth. We have lost the sound field.
Estados migratorios somos stakeholders, y ustedes deben protegernos porque nuestra comunidad los necesita.
Next, we have Levi Herrera.
Good evening. My name is Levi Herrera Lopez. I'm a parent of Salem Kaiser School students. I also know what it's like to be an undocumented immigrant in this community. But tonight, I'm here as executive director of the Mano Mano Family Center, on whose behalf I share our support for the proposed resolution on immigration status and enforcement, since it reaffirms current Oregon law. I do have to point out that the irony about having to pass this resolution is that the very people today being threatened with family separations and removals were only recently lauded as essential to our community. As a student, I experienced and witnessed discrimination against immigrants from teachers and staff. So passing this resolution, to me, is important and for my organization to clarify what rights immigrant students in your care actually have. Its approval, though, it should be only the start. You have to follow it up with training. You have to identify potential loopholes that could lead to unintended harm. I can think of at least one potential loophole that's out there. Most importantly, certainly, I think you have to remain committed and united in your duty to protect all students. When people ask you if they come, as they've done in the past, if they ask you to stop educating undocumented students, that message and that ideology, not talking about the person, but the message and ideology should be rebuked. You should care and address when your own members use their privileged role on this board to advocate for policy changes that will result in family separations and removal of the students in your care. Everyone is entitled to their own opinion, and it is okay to disagree. However, when the issue that causes disagreement will result in explicit harm to the people in your care, it needs to be addressed. I do want to thank you, thank this board and this administration for your understanding of the community you serve because having been involved in schools in many different ways for now more than something like 25 years, I've seen many boards, and I'm very happy with the type of work that we have and with the administration that we've had in the last few years for their connection to the community. Thank you.
Alex Sosa.
Can you all hear me? Perfect. Hi, my name is Alex Sosa. I'm a former graduate in 2023 and now an advocate for change in my community and public education. I'm here to talk about the resolution 2024-25-05. And I urge you all to vote yes as public servants, but also I'm here to share the importance of making sure this board isn't pushing a performative agenda also. Our students and families deserve more than restating a law. We need actions and needs met. As we have entered another four years of fear, dangerous rhetoric that leaves the most vulnerable communities impacted. We need resources like rapid response funds for immigrants' families, mandatory trainings for all staffs and volunteers, know-your-rights trainings for local communities behind these words. Otherwise, these words are just words with no commitment to the communities who are most impacted. I'd like to also talk about the importance of the phone pouches. I was in a meeting with the superintendent a few days ago also and shared the concerns about these phone pouches, and I think that it's nothing new of a conversation. I've seen all around, community members, families, students sharing the concerns, the lack of need of phone pouches, and the importance of finding other ways and solutions. I think we really need to take in consideration of all these things. And really, one of the important things that one of these students shared today was instead of investing $200,000 into phone pouches, we should be reinvesting these funds back to our students and their needs also. We know mental health is at a rise. We also know that our communities are at risk in the moment. And I know that the Salem Kaiser School District receives a student fund, investment funds, that is annual. I do know that also that fund was at $36 million, but have reduced to $11 million due to the impacts of COVID. But I think that we really truly need to use these funds in the right way. I know that our students deserve a lot more. As someone who came here in 2013, as a 13-year-old, sharing the same things that were happening now about the impacts of immigration, the impacts of separating communities and families. Not this exact board, but a board member who was here previously also agreed with the former board members about it not being a school issue, that immigration being in schools wasn't a school issue. And I think we need to really let that sit in and the importance of making sure our students and families feel safe in our schools and welcome. And that has to do with investments and not investing into weapon detectors also and making sure our students are safe. Thank you.
Cindy Gaetan.
Hello, my name is Cindy. Over the past seven or eight years, I have been working with youth in Salem and in the Kaiser area. But before that, I had also been a student at the Salem Kaiser School District. I just want to really emphasize the fact that there is not a year that goes by where ICE does not terrorize our immigrant communities. This is not something that is seasonal, that only happens every four years. It happens every year, every month. Everyone knows someone that have faced deportation. And then these are also stories that come out of the Salem Kaiser School District that never get told, never get heard of, or seen as nonexistent. We've been told by past board members in the past also that the school-to-prison and deportation pipeline also doesn't exist, which is, you know, a crazy thing to even say. But a lot of these stories of individuals that we haven't heard are individuals that have faced the school-to-prison and deportation pipeline, meaning the criminalization of in-school policies caused by a cycle of students facing juvie, getting targeted, stereotyped, having a continuation with the law due to the lack of resources, due to not getting to the root of the problem, and later on eventually facing deportation. This exists not only here, but across the country. The lack of resources is often first introduced in schools. You know, kids are being told of like, oh, you know, like what's going on at home. They don't know, the school isn't told when, let's say, a family member gets deported or an immediate caretaker. And it's really hard. It's really hard. It's something that is inexplicable. I'll share something personal as well. When I was a kid, an immediate family member in my own family got deported. And I share this not as another statistic, but as a story of... And I share this not as another statistic, but as a, as a story of, of someone's life, as someone being a father, a family member. But after 17 years, there's not a day that goes by that I don't think about this. So deportation affects every aspect of your life and we need to reinvest funds in being preventative now and having a strong resolution now. So I urge you to vote yes on it and consider making it stronger, having mandatory trainings for teachers on what to do when ICE shows up, putting more funds on mental health and being culturally proficient and, and knowing, having people that know, that come from the community that know what it feels like to have someone in their family members deported.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Roberta G M.
Hello, I'm a community member. I'm also aware of the role that you all play as a school board in keeping the schools running and making sure that students that go to school keep on going to school. Resolution 2024-25-05 is something that I became aware of recently. I noticed that this resolution, while confirming that the district will refuse working with ICE to a certain level, is missing a few points that would help every student even more. For example, when ICE is at school, it isn't just possibly disruptive. It is really traumatic for everyone, especially undocumented students. I believe that the resolution can be improved by naming the harm that ICE causes directly to students, staff and families. The resolution also depends on Oregon staying a sanctuary state. But since more and more ICE raids happen across the country and if Oregon no longer is a sanctuary state, how will students, especially undocumented students, continue to be safe? This resolution can be improved by promising all students that the Salem Kaiser School District will still be a sanctuary school and school district no matter what happens. Also, because ICE inherently divides our community by immigration status, this often leads people inside and outside the school to discriminate undocumented youth and families. This is why I demand that the resolution should include a no discrimination part that clearly says that the district will not tolerate any discrimination based on immigration status or anything related at all. I don't want any youth, no matter their immigration status, to feel unsafe at school. While, while I support the resolution, I believe that more needs to be added so that we really can make this resolution protect all students. I also urge you all that you all do not invest any more money towards metal detectors across any and all high schools.
Angelique Prater.
Hi, I'm a product of the Salem Kaiser School District and I'm also a community member now who works with a lot of system-impacted, historically-minoritized students in the Salem Kaiser School District. And I was a freshman in high school at South in 2016 when we experienced a wave of anti-immigrant xenophobic rhetoric and local statewide and national policies targeting undocumented immigrants in this country. And now we're about to enter another four years of the same thing, even though really deportations and anti-immigrant xenophobic language and policies have continued no matter who's in office. And let me tell you from experience that what these kids are about to go through is going to be extremely traumatic for them and this resolution is not putting any action to stop that trauma. When I started going to school at South after the new president had been elected, I saw a lot of my teachers wearing memorabilia that was praising that president. Not only that, but I remember specifically sitting at lunch with a lot of my friends who happened to be undocumented and multiple of them told me about a teacher who forced them to say that they supported the president at the time in order to get a better grade on a test. And he consistently targeted undocumented students at our school and he is still a staff in this district. And I promise that he is not the only teacher or administrator that harasses undocumented students in the same way. There were other teachers and other staff who told my undocumented friends that they were going to call ICE on them if they did not behave in certain ways that scared them and it made them not want to go to school anymore. And right now, all we have is a resolution with nice words reiterating the state policy. But what does it do for students who are entering the school doors, who are more scared than they've already been scared for however long they've been alive? Because from the moment they've been born, if they're either undocumented or have undocumented family members, they're living in fear every single day and that fear is only getting worse. So what I'm saying is that we need to add specific language to the resolution that actually protects the students. We need rapid response funds. We need mandatory paid training for all staff, all teachers and all volunteers to not discriminate against these students, to know what to do if ICE shows up and to train the students what to do if ICE shows up outside of school premises or at their own homes. There needs to be real words and real action behind these words and this resolution needs to be edited to reflect that. Because if it's not put in the resolution, then we have no contract to hold you all accountable too. And you guys are public servants for the community, so you should be actually doing things that support the community, not just nice words that make you look good and progressive. Because it's not progressive if you're not actually doing anything to support the people impacted.
Sarah M J.
Hi, my name is Sarah and I'm in sixth grade. I'm here to speak on the resolution 2024-24-05. I first want to say that I agree we do need this resolution and I urge you all to vote yes on it. But we need additional support and resources for families like mine. I say families like mine because I come from an immigrant dad. So this directly impacts me and my family. My dad was deported back in 2020 and I want to share this impact it had on us. My dad was the main provider in the family, so when he got deported, it took a big hit on us. Not only did it hit us financially, but also our mental health. And I was struggling how to cope with my dad's deportation. We were also threatened with an eviction. So I reached out to my counselor for support and they offered me resources like shoes, clothes and sack lunches. However, that did not do much when we were about to lose the roof over our heads. Due to our lack of money, we were led into eviction. And it didn't stop there. The eviction led us into a lack of hygiene products, food, clean clothes and many other basic necessities. I also started getting bullied because of this. Then I had to start wearing my older brother's clothes, which were oversized t-shirts, dicky shorts that went all the way up to my ankles. And teachers and my principal started to assume that I was gang, I was in a gang because of this. And also this even though I was in elementary school and those are the only clothes that I had. This resolution needs resources behind it to support families like mine who are directly affected by deportations and also for undocumented students and families. There needs to be an emergency rapid response fund so that when families go through experiences like I did, they don't have to worry about losing their homes after losing a family member. There needs to be an end to the punitive disciplinary practice in this district which directly puts students on the path to prison and ultimately deportation. I urge you all to vote yes on this resolution, but put action and resources behind the words. Otherwise, it just hollows students like me who are directly affected.
Alondro Sanchez.
Can you all hear me? Hi, my name is Yesenia. I'm in eighth grader and I'm a, I have been having a lot of fear and anger and sadness about what's happening in the news and all over states. Since I was little girl, I have been told to be careful when opening the door because it could be ICE and...
I'm not able to understand a word. Do you mind lowering the mic towards, closer to your mouth? Sorry.
Like this?
Just say a few words just to make sure.
Just try not to rub your mouth against the mic.
Ah, okay.
Start again. It's okay, please.
Alondro? Hi, my name is Yesenia. I'm, I'm in eighth grader. I have been having a lot of fear and anger and sadness about what happened in the news and all over the states. Since I was a little girl, I have been taught to be careful when opening the door because it could be ICE and they are aggressive and aggressive to anyone that looks like me and my family. It doesn't matter if you have papers or not, they don't care. A lot of my friends and people I go to school with have grown up with it, with the fear of coming home and not finding anyone there because of deportation. I don't think that is fair. No one should grow up with that fear. I think as immigrant students or students with immigrant parents, we deserve to be treated with respect and to feel safe. I support the resolution to not allow ICE in school in case of an emergency. I also think yonder pouches only take away the communication we need to have with our parents in scary moments like this because...
I'm gonna ask you to continue because we interrupted you, okay?
If ICE shows up at their work, I won't know. Or if ICE is at our house, I won't know if it's safe to come home either. What if our parents are trying to call us one last time? What if that calls or text message will be them telling us goodbye? Our community is hiring right now. Everyone is scared. We need reinvestments. We need to reinvest in our immigrant families. Instead of yonder pouches of metal detectors, we should use money for training for teachers and staff or what to do if ICE showed up. Get more mental health supports for families and students facing deportation to connect families with immigrant lawyers. As a student in Salem, we are the stakeholders. I hope you listen to what we and our family needs. Thank you.
Chair? Chair?
Yeah, would you?
Could you mind requesting the last presenter, the child, to submit the printed one? To be honest, I couldn't quite understand.
Is it possible for us to get a copy of Alondro's speech? We didn't, we couldn't understand a lot of it because of the mic, okay? Thank you. We have one more. Alfonso V? Say what? He's not here? Okay. I want to thank each and every one of you for sharing your concerns with us this evening. We really, really appreciate it. I learned a lot from what I heard tonight. And, you know, it takes being in your shoes to understand how you feel and what needs to happen. I want to thank you very, very much.
Ten minute break.
At this time, we'll take a 10-minute break. We will return at 7:15. Thank you.
Oh, I'm gonna call you.
Okay.
Okay. My students have set the job and they're probably learning a lot and what we're gonna do. And parents and children.
Cause you got, you got the.
I, I got a company. They're hired, they're hired to teach us for program direction.
Okay.
Once we get their skills, we're gonna stop them on our nonprofit level. But I'm gonna call you, cause you guys got a grant coming out.
It's out now.
Right, right. But it goes to.
You don't need money. You don't need money, yeah. So we can, we can come up with a partnership.
Yeah, we, we, we have a thing, we're gonna do an MOU for our local. Which was, which was uh, which was. It's with uh, a teacher.
Am I in charge?
No, it's being, it's being done by a monastery. Little things, monasteries.
Oh, that's nice.
Uh, how to get from there? They're supposed to invest their own money. And so their monastery, they're okay focusing on black and brown too. This could be one classroom, but kids can get together. It's just. The job, and they're trying to find funds to subsidize. They wanna do their own money.
Yeah.
To do uh, challenges. We need to put in two years for the best five thousand dollars. Challenge, to keep that back in balance. We need to find funds. It's simple, I understand. Pretty true. It's affordable. That's what we're looking for. Well, so, we should probably have a whole barrier, so. Because it's, it's only for parents who make a certain income. And for our parents to make just a little bit above. We can also do it. It doesn't help us. So we can figure out somewhere, we can somebody buy some of the. Our state, E E I T. This is Oregon. They had, they're probably at a hundred and fifty. Uh, we didn't, we didn't have any. It's like eighty five dollars per family, something like that. Our family still sold. For a dollar net. So this year they made a hundred fifty. This made them just. The biggest program by. Made that dollar. Allow more families to pay. It could help us. So, it's just. Probably less.
I see, I see.
I know. You guys, okay?
Yeah.
No, thank you. I didn't, I didn't mean to say. I knew that, I'm afraid. So I shouldn't have been happening. I know, I'm not gonna have that. I don't know. It's like you're gonna be able to do this every day.
I had this plan. Exactly, you gotta.
I know, I know. That's always control.
All we got.
Always control. Thank you Cynthia. I have to go, great job. I'll come back. We've been doing it for like seventeen years. You've been doing it for a long time. Hey, it's time to do. Do your job, I gotta get some time.
Okay. Alright. I gotta get started. Put the stuff in here. Alright.
You're in charge.
Yeah, don't you? It's a beautiful, beautiful time. So. Okay, that's what I'm saying. Here, the mission is kind of like. Alright, you're good. You're still right.
I'm calling for a word. I think you are true. Right.
This is a comment.
This is a lot of stuff.
I'm trying to read.
Right. I think it's a little. You know, that's the reason. Okay, I forgot before. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. Pull out the. Great. You guys calling these people? This is you and I. We're gonna walk there.
Alright, that's like.
Do you, do you just keep doing things or something?
Alright, the meeting is now.
The meeting is now in session.
Leadership U is to the change, chamber of commons.
Welcome back everyone. My mic not on. Welcome back everyone. Can I get a mic? There it is. Welcome back everyone, our meeting is back in session, please, thank you. The public hearing for the J. Gems Charter School renewal is now open. Director McElroy, will, will you please provide us with a brief overview of the process?
Good evening Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Student Advisors, and Superintendent Castaneda, and Happy New Year. I'm gonna provide us a brief overview of the charter renewal process. I know it's been a minute since we've done one of these. Um, as well as a quick overview of J. Gems Charter School. Before giving an opportunity for the Board Chair and Executive Director to briefly. Write a little bit more of a deep overview of their school. Um, so, very high level, but please stop me if you have any questions. For a charter renewal, these usually happen every five years. So if you're wondering, I have never done one of these before, you're probably right. Um, the first step in the process, which is where we are tonight, is just a first hearing. So no decisions are made. This is just the first step to notify the board and the public. That a charter school is interested in their renewal. Next meeting is when the board will uh, hear a recommendation from us. And decide whether or not to go forward with the renewal of a charter. So that happens legally and obligated thirty days after the first hearing, which is where we are tonight. And then within ninety days of that renewal decision from the board. We need to sign a fully executed charter agreement with that charter. So a lot of sort of very specific and required steps. But it goes from charter asks for a renewal, which they've already done. We are here and we're doing the first hearing with no decisions. The next one is the actual renewal and then a charter agreement signed thirty, ninety days after that. Any questions on process?
Does anybody have any questions? No, you did very good, thank you so much.
Great, it's also my first one of these as well.
Alright.
Um, and then next up, I'll do a very quick summary of um, J. Gems Charter School. Uh, just so we have a little bit of context and then I will let you introduce that group as well. Um, but so first and foremost, J. Gems stands for Jane Goodall Environmental Middle School. Um, so, long name, short explanation for the J. Gems part. They were originally founded in two thousand and J. Gems has been a longstanding partner with S K P S. Their mission is to provide an equitable, inclusive, and integrated curriculum for a diverse student body to achieve Oregon academic standards. Through partnerships with community and governmental organizations and an emphasis on field-based projects. Students will actively apply all of their knowledge and skills as they improve our local and global environments. J. Gems roughly is opened, is opened each year to about thirty-three students in their entering cohort in sixth grade. And serves about a hundred students schoolwide via lottery, if more than thirty-three students apply in sixth grade. And I'll pass it back to you Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Sanjukri Hari?
Well, thank you very much. You know, I just want to say a few words about J. Gems, if that's alright. Uh, this is a good school, uh, you know, because of, my son went to the school. And we personally experienced what a beautiful way they are running the school. Where you just immerse yourself in fieldwork and nature, etc. And they are very efficient way of using, they essentially had a few rooms. In that deaf school, I don't know if they're still located there. Uh, and uh. In such a way that the children have meals together at the same lunchtime. With children from the school of deaf. And it is a wonderful way for them to learn to accept. Uh, children who are differently abled. And the outcome of this charter school, at least when my son was going there. He knew that it was wonderful because all the kids went on to do very well. They had very good academic outcome, uh, and it was very well run. There's a lot of involvement from the community partners, parents, and it was very diverse. The only challenge was we had to kind of drop him back and forth and uh. He's, he would say that he missed, because he went in the seventh grade, so he missed his cohort from. Crossler and sports and things like that, so that was one challenge, but. I think it was very well-run school. And uh, we were very positive about that experience. And they still talk about it and they keep in touch with those kids. So it's a good sense of enga- eh eh, engagement and uh. Connectedness to the school, that is what impressed me, which is one of our goals as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I unfortunately missed that I was doing the introduction, so I apologize. And would like to introduce um, two members from J. Gems who are here tonight. First is Chairman of the Board and one of the founding teachers of J. Gems. Mike Weddle and their current Executive Director Doug Gunter. To talk a little bit more about the program and hopefully be able to answer any questions with much greater detail than I will be able to.
Okay, Chair Richardson, uh, Directors, Student Advisors, Superintendent Castanada. Um, thank you very much for twenty-five years of supporting J. Gems, this is our twenty-fifth year. The reason that we came into existence because at the time. We were doing a lot of environmental projects, field-based science, community restoration projects in the Waldo community. And because Waldo Middle School was under-enrolled, the board asked Steve Nelson, the principal at the time. If we would consider having a magnet school at Waldo to attract students from other parts of the district. To a program that was doing something special. So we started, opened in two thousand, Dr. Jane Goodall was there for our grand opening. Uh, and we've been going for twenty-five years. We morphed into a charter school in two thousand four. And we've been here to renew the charter several times since then. I think by all measures, I think, feel strongly that our school has been successful. Thank you very much for your kind words. Um, the academics based on state testing have been exemplary and continue to be. Uh, at our next time we're here, I have lots of charts and graphs and stuff to show you. Uh, about our relative performance relative to the district and the state. And I'll share that with you next time. I would just like to say that uh, one of the things I feel very strongly about that is a success for J. Gems. Is our project-based curriculum, the focus that our students have. Uh, for example, during COVID, we continued to do our field-based projects. Our attendance online was, was very, very high because our students were. Uh, focused on getting their projects done and we presented our projects, it was very exciting. Jane Goodall was actually able to be one of our expert panelists because we were online. Uh, on Zoom, it was very exciting. Uh, and, and it continues to be very exciting. I, this year, I retired in two thousand seven, I still serve on the board, but I also. Uh, work as a, I come in and lead research groups and I'm doing three eighth-grade research projects this year. One of the strong focuses of our school, as has been mentioned earlier, is our community engagement. So I have a group that's working with the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde and the City of Salem Parks Department. On setting up demonstration sites for First Foods plants in three parks in Salem and Turner. I have another project working on sea otter reintroduction, the feasibility of that, working with the Oregon Zoo, Oregon Coast Aquarium, US Fish and Wildlife Service. And the Alaka Alliance. And then a project in partnership with O S U and the State Parks Department on forest fire restoration. And then we have three other projects that I'm not doing, but are equally exciting. And I guess my point is, the community connections that we have are very, very strong. And appreciated both by the students and by our community partners. And just two last things, we received a grant from the Oregon Department of Education several years ago called a dissemination grant. We were asked to share the projects that J. Gems does with other schools, not necessarily charter schools, but other schools, public and private throughout the state. Um, I talked to over, I traveled around for three years, talked to over three hundred teachers in a hundred and sixty schools. And sixty-nine of those schools are now doing the projects that we did. Um, the other thing I would mention is that J. Gems, in an effort to reach out to the community. Working with the Diet Ecology Education Program, we have teacher workshops twice a year, in the spring and the summer. We've had those for ten years where we teach roughly thirty teachers each session. About doing community-based and field-based research with our students. So we try to sort of spread the wealth. And again, I, I think we've been, we're very proud of what we've done, very proud of our students. And thank you again very much for your twenty-five years of your support.
Uh, yeah, I just want to reiterate what Mike has said, as Executive Director, I've been, I've been at the school now for about fourteen years. Um, and I think it's our commitment to, uh, you know, giving kids an authentic education that they can apply out in the real world. Focusing on science and technology, uh, that really rounds out their education and shows them the importance of what academics can do. I've seen students come in that were not really focused on the mission of J. Gems. But by the end of eighth grade year, accepting that and watching them flourish then in high school. We get so many students that come back to us, always want to visit, check in and tell us about all the things they're doing. How they're connected in the community and their plans for when they're going forward. So again, just want to reiterate with Mike, thank you for your continued support. We love our school, we're passionate about it, and we truly believe it is the best for the holistic child.
Thank you very much for your comments this evening.
Chair?
I'm getting ready to ask. Yes.
I have a question. So what, I mean, you, you, you are having some, I mean, some of the faculty probably must have retired by now. So you have the same faculty or some of the old faculty still continuing or are you still in the same location?
Uh, that's correct, we're still at the school, the deaf campus. Kind of on the Maple Street side of things and, you know, I taught Aaron as, I was there when Aaron was a student, so, uh, had him. I would say, uh, myself and one of their teacher, uh, his name's Nathan Sutermin, I think is who Aaron would remember. And then our other two, um, are newer, so.
Would love to come and visit one of these days.
Hopefully, absolutely, please do.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And maybe this was stated and I missed it, I was curious around how many students usually apply or. Apply, right, and then there's the raffle piece, so I was just kind of curious what that number looks like, recognizing that there is thirty-three students. Who are. students who are accepted for sixth-grade entry. Okay.
Yeah, so every, every sixth-grade year, we reach out to fifth-grade students applying in about March is when we have our lottery. We take thirty-three new sixth graders every year, and we have about ninety-nine kids in the entire school. So the goal is to keep them sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, obviously through the entire program.
And the applicant pool is typically a hundred to a hundred and thirty students applying for thirty-three slots. Yeah.
Can I just ask what, like, if, off the top of your head, if you know, like, what the average student-to-teacher ratio is?
Well, there are four teachers and ninety-nine kids, so, you know, twenty-four and three, four students or something per teacher. The, the reality is though, the, the, the sixth-grade class is together for sixth-grade Language Arts Societies and for sixth-grade science and for sixth-grade Conservation Biology and, and so on. And then there are elective classes where they move around in robotics and art and various other elective classes, and those will be smaller. But the main core classes will have thirty-three kids in them.
What are the demographics of your student population?
You know, off the top of my head, you know, we've got representation from all, all demographics. That's one thing that we've been working. I know next time when we're here in February to present, we'll have those numbers in our, in our slideshow for you specifically. But we've, that's one of the things we've worked really hard at. Having a lottery-based system, right, is difficult because it's based on who applies and then that's who we go through. But we've really worked hard to make sure that all schools are understanding of our program, what we do, and diversify even our community programs and our partners so that it's reflected in our, in our student body.
Thank you. If we have any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I, no, I think we have, the next step is the public comment portion, if anybody signed up.
Alondra, you signed up for this. Did you speak at the time that you did your public comment, or did you want to speak now on J.GEMS?
Okay.
All right. Thank you. The public hearing for the J.GEMS charter school renewal is now closed. Next up is the action items portion of the agenda. As a reminder, the Board heard a first reading about the potential sale of Hazel Green Elementary School at our meeting in December. I will now turn it over to Chief, Chief Operations Officer Bob Silva for a brief review.
Thank you, Chair Richardson, Directors, Student Advisors, Superintendent Castaneda. As Chair said, we're bringing back a second reading of the resolution to essentially surplus, authorize the surplus of the property, which is just one of many steps to enable the school district to eventually dispose or sell the property. So originally purchased in nineteen fifty-three and operated as an elementary school up until 2011, when the school board repurposed it at that point. They, since 2011, Valley Inquiry Charter School, one of our other charter schools, has operated out of that facility and currently has a charter agreement to continue operating out of that facility until 2031. So the action that you're being recommended to take tonight is to declare that in your judgment, let me find the line here, that the Hazel Green Elementary School property is not required for school purposes. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the sale of the Hazel Green Elementary School property as proposed?
Yes, please.
Okay. Dr. Sandra Gary moved it. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Director Harnish seconded. At this time, I'll open the floor for discussion. All right, we will move forward. All those in favor of approving the sale of the Hazel Green property as proposed, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any abstentions? So this motion moves. Thank you very much. The second I, action item, the Board heard the first reading of the resolution related to student, staff, and family safety with regard to immigration status at the December Board meeting. Superintendent Castaneda, do you have any additional comments to share?
No, I do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution number twenty-two-four-twenty-five-oh-five, Salem Kaiser Schools, Public Schools Board of Directors Resolution related to student, staff, and family safety with regard to immigration status as proposed?
I move.
Thank you very much. Director Pressy?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Director Cottenhill. At this time, I'll open the floor for discussion. Yes, Director Pressy?
I do want to start off by saying that I really appreciate all the public comment that we received on this item, and I appreciate the district for the time of preparing this resolution and also the Board for considering it. I do have one question. I was wondering if it would be reasonable for the district to potentially include some kind of timeline in the resolution, just to make sure that when we are saying that we will be providing clear communication to students and staff and families about their rights and protections, as well as continuing to increase and enhance partnerships with community-based organizations and continuing or committing to ongoing training, I'm just wondering if the, if it would be reasonable to add like some kind of timeline?
I think it would be reasonable. The, the first of the items you read is the easiest to attach a timeline to. The others are kind of ongoing in nature, but I think if it were the will of the Board to attach a sixty-day timeline would be certainly reasonable.
So I guess I would like to propose an amendment to attach a sixty-day timeline to just the first section, or could I do the whole thing?
I think it would probably make most sense to attach the sixty-day timeline to the last portion that says be it further resolved.
Okay.
As the other elements prior to that are already standing in policy. So perhaps one consideration is be it further resolved, the district shall within sixty days, colon, and then the following three items.
Okay. Yes, I would like to make that amendment to change it to be it further resolved, like within sixty days, the district shall.
It has been moved and seconded for an amendment on a timeline of sixty days added to the latter part of the resolution. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Is there more discussion?
On them, is there any more discussion on the amendment? We're, we're voting on the amendment, right? All in favor of the amendment, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we have one abstention. Dr. Sandra Gary. So the motion moves. Now do we vote on the resolution?
Now we reopen discussion on the item.
Okay, at this time, the floor is open for discussion on the resolution. Yes.
Thank you, Chair. I, I really appreciate the youth who shared very heartfelt personal experiences about the challenges our immigrant community faces with deportation or removal and, or return. When we get caught up in this, you know, this clogged-up immigration system and all the other challenges that we are facing and the trauma that comes with it. I also got, I want to thank our district Superintendent and legal counsel for taking time to answer several of the questions that I wanted to kind of personally make sure that we can do a thorough process of understanding what all this means. This is, I'm, you know, this is my observation that this resolution essentially restates previously approved resolutions and does not add any additional requirement, as ideally pointed out by the students as well. However, I appreciate the district has been very transparent in sharing the information and communicating with all families in English and Spanish, what the schools can do and cannot do legally. So I really, really appreciate that. This is the first time I saw in such clarity. I also believe the state laws, which our state laws have been thirty, nearly thirty years in evolution, and policies do protect asylum seekers and refugees who have very credible fear upon return or are awaiting procedure process within the immigration system. So we are one of the few states in the nation. And I also feel that our existing school policies do afford all the constitutional protections for our students and the faculty, and this allows our students to attend the school and receive a good education, which is also really important. However, there's part of me, I'm kind of also struggling that it's a fiduciary responsibility to protect all children from both American and immigrant families from unfortunate incidents where there has been harm caused because of our challenges with the border, clogged-up asylum system and immigration challenges. And we do have serious problems like fentanyl trafficking, safety concerns, and crimes related to all kinds of things. So as much as these laws are important, but these laws also appear to have tied the hands of agencies so that we can even provide necessary support and help, and also to make sure those who take, do bad things and take advantage of our system are also prevented from, you know, take harming those who have very credible fear and need asylum and refugee status here. So I, you know, I wish there was a better way of state working collaboratively with the federal government and find the right balance of providing protection and also safeguarding the community that really sought asylum and refugee here, status here. Personally, I feel the state should work collaboratively with the federal government and address this issue once and for all, and avoid any confrontational approach and draw unnecessary national attention, which will draw large influx of people into our state and district. We must take care of those who are already here and do the best we can. So personally, my position would be, I will be abstaining from this vote because I feel our policies are sufficient. It is for the district to operationally take necessary steps to protect and find the right balance, and for our state to work with the feds. There's no more we can say that we won't, because then our children get caught up in this and school districts are left with having to take care of matters that the state or the feds won't deal in a collaborative manner. So this is why, after a lot of thinking about it, this is going to be my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to turn it over to the Superintendent to give us some clarification.
I, I think we might have made a small procedural error, so we're just going to name it and then clean it up right now. I believe that it was the intent of the Board in the last motion and vote to be, to be voting on the proposed amendment.
Yes.
That we then reopened it up for discussion. And just to make sure that everybody's clear on process, it's my recommendation, though somewhat irregular, that we now complete discussion and then vote on the motion as amended. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify on something that Director John Gary was saying, in that just the clarification of, what's it called?
Amendment?
The, no, not the amendment, the standing. So he didn't pass it, he?
Abstaining.
Abstaining? Does that mean like a neutral position on the, like, not?
Not voting.
Either supporting or?
Not voting.
Okay. And then in what you were saying, sorry, it kind of felt to me like you were supporting the, kind of like the ideals of what the resolution is saying, but not the resolution in itself, because we already have prior standing documents that support this? And so I just wanted to clarify your position on that, that you feel that this resolution wouldn't further support, or this further support isn't necessary?
Chair Mayag?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I think this resolution does not add any additional value nor subtract anything from our existing policies, our existing laws, because there is more than one place we have addressed this, more than one place. We do have laws in our state which, the sanctuary law, which mainly talks about law enforcement and the student protection of the Information Act, forgive me if I don't, I didn't say it properly. So there are already mechanisms and we do have policies which we have adopted, which says that we will follow those laws. Now the real, so for me, adding another resolution today is not going to serve any additional purpose, number one. The number two is, in a time like this, we will just be adding, we'll just be attracting unnecessary national attention. And, and we will be making some commitment to our students and the community, saying this is what we can do, but students also have to live in the community outside. And so it's really, it's much broader than what schools can and cannot do legally. That's another reason why I wanted to do it, bring it up. And ideally, I think the states has to sit down with the feds and talk about these issues, because immigration may be a civil matter, but it does have local impact. For example, the smuggling of fentanyl and, you know, the crime, these are exactly why our communities escaped from different parts of the world and sought refuge here. And so it's really, it's a matter of needing to protect those who have very credible fear of sent back, which we have to protect them, because that is part of our international treaties we have signed and part of our law. But on the other hand, those who are taking advantage of that and taking advantage of the same community, we need to protect them from that and remove the ones who are taking advantage of our communities. So it is a matter of finding the right balance. It is not anything to do with the school, but when it comes to the way our state laws are written, I am left with the open question, how do we protect both Americans and immigrant children who are unfortunately falling victims to those who have taken advantage of the broken border or the clogged-up immigration system or lack of enforcement? So it is more than what this policy can support. So I just wanted to be honest and upfront with our community, saying, yes, those who are here, we need to protect them, but there's really, it's an operational matter and there is no need to keep bringing it up as another resolution today. We can accomplish the same without having to bring it up as a separate resolution. So I hope I answered your question. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two-four? Yes.
Are we still in discussion?
Oh, yes, we're in discussion. Is there any more discussion?
Go ahead.
I'll be brief. I wanted to just echo the gratitude expressed by Chair Richardson to everyone who, over the last few weeks, has provided input. the last few weeks, has provided input and comment on this resolution, including everything that was shared today and the personal stories. They are received with a lot of care and compassion and just a reminder, right, about the lives and the impacts that, the impacts on lives from federal immigration policy and then, of course, also how our local, um, systems, uh, both function and dysfunction and, and how those impact families. I, I, we're not here to solve federal immigration law, right? That is not a conversation, that's not the conversation we're having today, but I do believe that the conversation we're having today is one of standing behind the children and the families and the educators in our community. And, um, I do believe that we have a duty as a board, as leaders here, to speak up and, um, and solidify to the best of our ability, the dignity and the lives of the people here. And so to say that this does not add anything or that it does not subtract, I think those are, um, shall, it's a shallow way of, of understanding the impact that a system such as ours, the, the, the size of it and the depth of it has on people. So I will gladly support and I recognize it is imperfect, but I also believe that there is courage in moving things forward, even when they're imperfect, recognizing that with time and with collaboration, we can improve. And just the amendment that was shared today by Director Nahuos Pressey, right? And the suggestions that were shared around training and that capacity building and, you know, I think sparking ideas for us around how do we better partner with community partners and community organizations, because this isn't something that our sole system is going to be able to do. But I do believe that we have the power and the will within our community to make sure that our children, families and educators are protected regardless of what happens across our nation. And, um, so thank you, Director Superintendent Castaneda as well for helping us move this forward and for everyone who has provided their comments and their stories to us.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'll just quickly agree with everything, um, that our second vice chair, or no, first vice chair, Karina Guzman Ortiz, just said. I think it's really important for us as a board to be public in our support for this resolution and for safe and welcoming schools. This is one of our board goals. We collectively agreed to, to support efforts, initiatives, resolutions, um, and work on community engagement to achieve those goals. And, and for me, this resolution is at the very heart of our commitment. Thank you to the students and the youth in our community tonight for sharing very personal and impactful stories. I think, I also agree that this is the first step and there's more that we can do to build upon this commitment. And I'm looking forward to working with the superintendent and her team to ensure that we can provide the training. I'm really, um, thrilled that we added a timeframe towards the end there. But it is, we are entering an uncertain time where I think many of us are already hearing things across the community that have ramped up, that are incredibly unfortunate and make our community feel less welcoming. And so it's incumbent upon all of us as leaders to do what we can to create a safe and welcoming environment where all of our students can thrive in Salem Kaiser. Thank you again for sharing your stories. I can't imagine how hard that must be. And I'm just so appreciative of it and I hope you keep doing it because I think there's a lot of people across our community that need to hear those stories to really understand the impact of their words.
Any other discussion? Yes.
I too would just like to say, I believe that this is probably one of the most important things that we can do right now at this time. As a board, we are here to set forth policy that will help to support our district, our students and our staff. And at this time, I think while the laws, the sanctuary laws are clearly imperfect, the policies may be imperfect, it is something that we can do right now and put weight behind. Thank you so much also for the amendment to adding that timeline, which will also, I think, us do a better job as a board to be able to not only lend support, but better understand what is happening in our schools. And finally, to everyone who spoke tonight and to those who have given feedback along the way, thank you for coming, thank you for your stories, um, and thank you for your work in helping to make our schools more welcoming. So I will definitely be supporting this.
I just want to make sure that we request your statements in writing so we can refer back to them. Thank you so much for being here this evening and sharing, being brave and courageous, inviting the fight for your students, for all of our students, for our families and for our community members. You are appreciated very much. Thank you. Any other discussion?
No discussion, but I do just want to make sure procedurally that we have the language of, um, I move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-four twenty-five dash zero five as amended.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do. All right. Do I have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four twenty-five dash oh five as amended?
I move.
Thank you, Director Pressey. Do we have a second? Thank you, Doc, Director Cottingham. All in favor of the amended resolution, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? I have one abstention, Dr. Sanj Gary. Thank you very much. That brings us to our consent calendar. Superintendent Castaneda, do you wish to provide review of any item on the consent calendar?
I do not.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Director Harnish made the motion. Is there a second? Dr. Sanj Gary is second in it. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? As a reminder, everything in the information standard reports section is provided for the board's review ahead of the meeting. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
Yes, briefly, I'll just call to your attention, um, you are getting amongst the first rounds of the executive limitation reports, which are somewhat new to all of us. You'll see that EL three, one, three and four are accompanied in here. Um, and I also would just like to call your attention to the, um, although I mentioned it in my earlier comments, it's the ACFR, um, which provides you information about the district's, um, financial profile for the previous fiscal year and information from our auditor about our recently completed single audit.
Thank you. That takes us to our board reports section of the agenda, where the directors and student advisors share work from formal committee assignments and activities of the board related to youth programs and the school district activities since the last board meeting. Who wants to be first? Please.
I just want to thank the students of our school district who come to that Zenzili, mentoring program under Parker Foundation. And it was so beautiful to see that they distributed toys during Christmas for, uh, I believe nearly two hundred and eighty different families as students from, and so many children came from all over. And so it was wonderful to see that students who were coming for mentoring program are now working to distribute the toys, number one. The second thing is I really appreciate the letter Superintendent Castaneda came up with, which we were able to share in a national field telephone, uh, sorry, Zoom meeting with nearly hundred, close to hundred different leaders. The story behind the letter and how the letter was drafted and how it was spread and got the signatures and support of nearly ninety different leaders, which was released on November sixth, I believe. And then we did the same thing with the state level Braver Angels. So, so thank you, Superintendent, for allowing them to use that letter. I appreciate that you're giving us the permission. So it was, so what, a good deed that you started here, good job you started here, is now spread all over the nation. And so I really feel a good thing that came out of your work and Salem Leadership Foundation, and I appreciate that on behalf of the Braver Angels crew. Thanks.
Would you like to go next?
I would love to go next.
Okay.
All right. So I actually had to check my calendar to see when this happened. I feel like December was an absolute blur, personally and professionally. But I have to say, on December fourteenth, I was able to attend the robotics contest, um, tournament, excuse me, not contest, it's a tournament. And I had so much fun. I also got to hang out with Olga and Jonathan and Danielle and we were judges. We owned it. It was so much fun. So I'm really looking forward to, hopefully, I'll be invited back next year. I don't know if I will or not, but that was super fun. And the dedication of teachers and students was just second to none. It was really impressive to see what these robots could do in terms of climbing and all the programming that they had to do. And got to talk to students about their work and it was really impressive. So, super fun. And of course, the superintendent was there as well.
I wasn't.
You weren't a judge.
Though I was not a judge.
Director Ortiz?
Not as fun, but it was still great. I was at the parent informational night last week at North Salem High School regarding the safety, the weapons detection implementation. And, um, there was great questions coming from families and parents around, you know, wanting to understand the implementation timeline, wanting to understand, um, the changes, you know, to the entry and exit of students and when this was going to happen and how it's going to impact our daily, daily entrance to the buildings. And also curious around, um, some of the questions that we asked early in the stages as we were exploring, um, this as an option, right, around, does it impact student sense of belonging and, and how does it impact the sense of safety for, for students and educators? So it was, it was great to hear those questions and feeling that, um, that ease, ease, right, that we had explored those same questions as a board. And I know that those conversations are happening at other schools over the next few weeks or so, and just wanted to also express gratitude towards the communications team that was there, all hands on deck. Things were just happening, moving and playing and it just made it look super seamless. And then, uh, second, on Friday, I was appointed to the Oregon School Board Association, Region eleven Board of, uh, as Board of Directors. So that term runs until December of twenty twenty-five and just want to share that with you all, happy to represent, um, you all and Region eleven, uh, at least through December. So I believe someone has stepped down and so it's filling in for that portion of the remaining term. That's all that I have because that's as far back as I can remember.
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations. And I wanted to comment on both of the last things that were said. And first I'll just start with what Director Harnish said about the robotics competition. And while I wasn't there, I do have friends who competed and are in the program. And it just, um, goes to highlight the computer science and robotics program at whichever of the high schools that has them, and at least I know that South has it. And, um, just highlighting the importance of that teacher's work because, um, the teacher who teaches computer science at South is the only teacher who carries that program by himself and that extracurricular as well. Yeah. And the, talking about the conversation of like weapons detection and communicating with, um, like the community about it, that has been a conversation that, um, a lot of student, uh, like committee groups that I'm in have been talking about, like the South Advisory Group, Student Group Committee was talking about hosting, um, some sort of community conversation in the spring to just let students know more about, um, or, I'm so sorry, this is unrelated, but it was about the phone pouches. Anyways, um, uh, I want to thank Superintendent Castaneda for coming to, uh, this little unified event that I hosted in the winter and just highlight how we are having and a lot of other high schools are going to be having their unified assemblies this coming month, which is also really exciting because I believe it is a tradition at South, I'm not sure if it is at other high schools, to dunk teachers in the middle of the gym by pouring an ice cold bucket of water over their head, which is really fun. And, and, uh, the last thing is just highlighting, highlighting another thing that's going on at South is that there is a, uh, two students, or Jacob Lindsay and Bryson Martin, who lead a tutoring center in the library before schools every, before school every single Wednesday. So they come early, regular time, an hour early. And anyone's welcome to come and we have talked to some teachers about getting underclassmen to come and we've got, and we have gotten the heavy recommendation that it's not as accessible as we hope it would be because of bus schedules and stuff like that. And so we are thinking of starting a mentor, the same thing, but during lunch practically. So, yeah.
Okay.
McKay, McKay's NHS, uh, McKay's NHS program, uh, they just recently volunteered at the food share and they helped pack over twenty-five hundred pounds of food. So that's really cool to see some of McKay's students kind of getting into the community and getting active and involved. Tomorrow McKay has its, the weapon detection informational meeting because McKay is receiving the weapon detection systems next week. So super excited about that. And, yeah, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Senator Pressey, did you do one?
Um, I did not have, um, much to report on my official committee assignments. The SCATS Policy Committee Group did not have a meeting in December. But I will take this brief moment to just reaffirm the importance of the resolution we just passed. While there are some folks that would like to tie in our immigration issues with completely unrelated issues, I just want to take this moment to educate folks on the situation that we're actually facing, one in which, um, we have not seen meaningful immigration reform since nineteen eighty-six. And by that, I mean, in nineteen eighty-six, IRCA or Amnesty, the Immigration Reform and Control Act was passed, which provided, um, a pathway to citizenship for anyone that arrived in this country prior to January one, nineteen seventy-two. And I know that, um, some folks might have been around at that time, uh, but I was certainly not. And anybody that has come into this country since then has not been able to establish a meaningful pathway to citizenship. Now, there is a green card process, but it is entirely lottery based, with the priority going to folks immigrating from countries that have very low immigration rates into the United States. So the situation that we're facing is one where we have systematically and intentionally decided to exclude the majority of our labor force and primarily the folks that are picking our food and making sure that we have access to those meals that we take care of making at home to feed our families, to feed ourselves, to nourish our bodies. And that's why this is important. In the mid Willamette Valley, we are a very dense agricultural area. Actually, Oregon makes up one percent of all U.S. sales in agriculture. We are the leaders in pine trees, in blueberries, in hazelnuts. If we are not standing up and very publicly affirming that we are protecting our community members, why would they stay here? Our schools are supposed to be places where students Our schools are supposed to be places where students feel safe to come, to learn, and to be themselves. And that's why it was of the utmost importance to me and to many other people that we passed the resolution that we bided. And I really thank, again, the people that worked on it, the people that came and gave public comment in support of it and shared difficult stories, and particularly the board members that supported it, the folks that were brave enough to make sure that they made their stance known to the community on how they're going to support the community very specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. You go ahead, darling.
I'll be quick. Well, probably not. I have three things. It's been a long time, so I, yeah, I had to think back as well. One, there was an amazing event that I don't think we've talked about yet in the board meeting, but it was at Bush Elementary, where balance bikes were donated to the school. And Superintendent was there as well, and it was, the gym was filled with kindergartners. Our governor, Tina Kotek, came, and it was an organization called All Kids Bike, and the company was HDR, who donated all the balance bikes. And they do a big reveal, and you can see the kids' faces light up. It's incredible. And then we got to help them all put helmets on and watch them try the balance bikes around the gym. They also have pedals that they can attach later so that they can learn how to bike while they're at school. Also at Bush Elementary School, I got to participate in Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. That happens November 14th each year, and so I think that we didn't get to talk about it because of all the holidays, but I encourage everyone in the community to participate next year on November 14th. Many of the kids had drawn art, highlighting Ruby Bridges and why the day is important. And, you know, it just really drives home the fact that it was not that long ago that we had segregated schools. Ruby Bridges is alive and well today, and it's amazing that our kiddos get to learn about her and her bravery.
She has an Instagram account.
She does have an Instagram account. And last but not least, I wanted to just do a quick shout out. I got to attend a luncheon for the Music Lessons Project. That's a small nonprofit in our community run by Sandy Wiss Carson, and it's supported by a number of community leaders, business leaders. And this nonprofit was started because there was a need identified in the community. As everyone's aware, we have such an amazing and incredible music program across all Salem Kaiser Public Schools, but our music educators were identifying that many of the students who are incredibly talented did not have access to private lessons. And private lessons are, is often the way that, you know, a great musician can become even better and explore their talent and potentially go on to, you know, college for music or become a professional musician. So this nonprofit will pay for approximately 10 lessons each school year with private instructors, and they work with a lot of our title schools to identify those kiddos. There's a fundraiser coming up on the 1st of February, and it is, it coincides with the Middle School All-City Concert at North. And so please reach out if you're interested to the Music Lessons Project or to me, and I can get you connected. They, they have a very small budget, something like $150,000, and the more money they raise, the more lessons they can contract for kids across our community. So, want to share that.
Thank you. I was able to attend the Mckay High School Christmas concert, and our very own Kaden was a part of the concert. And I just want you to know, it was beautiful. Just beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. You all did an awesome job. And I'm looking forward to more music and hearing more from you all on that. I want to reiterate what Director Cottingham said. November 14th was declared Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day by Salem, Oregon. Huge, huge, huge movement. Congratulations to that. I also want to say that I am a product of segregation, so I know exactly what Ms. Bridges went through, and I'm just glad to know that we have moved past that. We're not where we need to be, but we're better than we were. When we know better, we do better. I am also thankful for Dr. Martin Luther King. Because of him, I can go into restaurants now, I can go into hotels now, because I remember the days that I couldn't. And my mother, we lived in Texas, and my mother's brothers lived in California, and she had to cook everything that we were going to eat before we left Texas. And she drove from Texas to California, and we had to sleep in the car and find a place to use the restroom. And so I'm thankful for everything that he did in order to open those doors for us and allow us to be able to go to public schools as well. I want to give a huge thank out, thank you, shout out to everyone who helped with the tribute to Martin Luther King tonight, all of the students and parents that attended, also Pastor Marilyn Williams, who helped. Director of the B. Black Foundation, Mr. Greg Peterson, who provided us the sign. Director of the AAYLC, Darlene Angus-Andress, who did the folders for the kids. Want to give a special shout out to Ashley Dunn and our Tanya Gimble for being here to help the students and direct the students. Pastor Ronnie Brooks from To God Be the Glory, who also helped get students to come and participate. And a very special friend, Rosalyn Green, who helped to assemble the notebooks. Last but not least, I want us to continue to remember everybody in Los Angeles and everything that they are going through. And if there's anything that we can do to support or help them, we need to try to do it. It's just really sad. I know we've had Oregon fires in the past, but I don't, we've never had anything like they're experiencing right now. So, let's just keep them in our thoughts and our prayers. It is currently 8:17. At this time, this meeting is adjourned.